Yeah, I just heard a horn. I guess, did anyone else hear the horn? Good, I'm just not me. We need, we have some motions coming out of closed session. The first one we'd like to do was advice from officials on FOIP section 24. We need a motion on 12.1. Would anyone like to make this motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor Sipchak for making a motion on behalf of council that council tables item 12.1 Advice from Officials, FOIP Section 24 under the December 12, 2023 Regular Meeting of Council. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call a vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto, was it 12.2 from closed session? Anyone like to make this motion?
I don't really want to make the motion, but I'll go ahead and make it anyways.
Right on. Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion on 12.2. That council approves an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of $677,464.71 for the Fort Ken and Armore Fire Hall projects as ordered by the Court of Queen's Bench of Alberta to be funded from the 2023 operating budget surplus. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. And 12.3. We need an extension for C2 agreement with the town of Bonneville. Anyone like to make this motion? Okay, thank you, Counselor Swager. For making a motion that council approves a one-year extension to the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility, amending memorandum of agreement date December 31, 2022 between the Municipal District of Bonneville, Town of Bonneville, and the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation until December 31, 2024. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. So I believe we are at 6.1 Glendon Library Board. Who wishes to speak on that? Okay, that's fine. We can, we can go to 7.1. Let's go to 7.1 Development Application, 7.1, and she's ready to roll. Morning.
Good morning. This is Development Permit Application 2023-D-227 for Ditch Towing Limited Glen Kuzicki. The applicant is applying for an auto storage use for an automotive towing and storage yard in an industrial lot with shop. The property is located at the Aurora Borealis Industrial Subdivision. Adjacent properties are industrial lots and the remainder of a quarter section. The applicant is applying to operate a towing and storage yard. They will have approximately 10 vehicles onsite at a time and will operate 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. with on-call after hours. There will be one to four employees. They operate one tow truck, one one-ton duly for car hauler trailers, with the possibility of increasing the fleet to another tow truck, flat-deck trailer, and a semi/trailer combo. They intend to gain an RCMP contract for the recovery of vehicles and will hold the vehicles onsite till delivery to repair shops. Drip trays and spill kits will be used as needed. Any accumulated fuels will be stored in marked barrels with secondary containment and disposed of by a third party when required. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on November 7, 2023, and we have not received any response. This application is compliant with the Aurora Borealis and Highway 28 and 41 area structure plans. Recommendation for Development Application 2023-D-227 is approve the request for an auto storage use for a towing and storage yard as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 83.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. As per Section 83.7 Outdoor Storage, there shall be no outdoor storage of goods, products, materials, or equipment permitted within the front yard setback of this district. Outdoor storage of goods, products, material, and equipment shall be screened from public thoroughfare, through thoroughfares to the satisfaction of the development authority. As per Section 52.1 Outdoor Lighting shall be located that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. As per Section 60.5 of the Land Use Bylaw, number 1667, one sign not exceeding 1.5 square meters shall be permitted for the purpose of identification. Additional signs require a development permit.
Very well done. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
You said adjacent landowners. Like what, you guys, for this permit, you also notify adjacent landowners? Like which ones do you notify, the ones on either side of them?
So for, for all discretionary uses, we, we notify adjacent landowners, and the adjacent landowners are parcels that are touching the parcel or would be touching the parcel if there weren't municipal reserve streams or roads in between them. So we didn't notify the whole park. It was just the parcels that are around that one lot.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve for the towing yard.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion that council approves Development Permit Application Number 2023-D-227 for auto storage use for an automotive towing and storage yard within Northwest 30615 west of the 4th M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6 General Regulations and Part 7, Section 83.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Ditch Towing Limited as per the recommendations presented. Any other discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Swager?
Yeah, just one question. That, I guess this is, I'm answering it, but is this an industrial subdivision? The whole subdivision is industrial?
Yeah, through the Reeve to Counselor Swager, that is correct. This Aurora Borealis has been redistricted to rural industrial.
So is what she's saying, if you want to buy a lot and build a house there, you can't? Okay, all right. Any other discussions? All right, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto six, 6.1.
Thank you, council. 6.1 is an item we're bringing back to council regarding the Glendon Library Board's funding request. On October 24, 2023, Carla Patton, library manager of the newly created Glendon Library Board, presented an overview to council of the new Glendon Library and its services. Also, she presented a request for funding to cover a portion of their 23 startup expenses, including a small capital, small capital purchases, and a request for Ward 3 Counselor Mike Kriviac to join their library board. Administration brought these requests to council for consideration at our last regular meeting on November 14, and as directed, council tabled it to today's meeting and requested additional information to be provided by the board. That additional information is attached in Appendix C. As well. Ms. Noreen Cotton is here today, who is the Glendon Library Board Chair, and should you require any additional information, she is here if council wishes to ask her any questions with a motion to allow her to speak, if you wish.
If council wishes to ask Mrs. Cotton any questions? Yes, you do?
Well, yeah, because I.
You need to make a motion to.
I'll make the motion then to, I guess, have her speak.
Okay. Can we wait for the motion to come up, or you have it? Yeah, no problem. We'll take a second there to give him a moment to. Does Mrs. Cotton know that she has to speak for an hour? No, okay. All right, thank you, Counselor Swager, for making a motion on behalf of council that Noreen Cotton, Chair of the Glendon Library Board, be approved to address council. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried, thank you. Mrs. Cotton?
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm sure you have lots to say, but when it was presented last time, there was questions about the hours of operation, and the hours of operation were really minimal. It was like three hours a day and whatever, and so we didn't quite think that was going to work very well. I noticed they've changed considerably. And then there was another discussion about Northern Lights Library System, because they fund all these regional libraries, and so Glendon was actually in the Bonneville's kind of draw area for libraries, so that was kind of another question. Would, would the town of Bonneville then lose some of their funding from Northern Lights Library System to go to Glendon? So maybe you can just talk a little bit about that, and so we know what we're doing.
Is this on? Is this on?
Yes.
Yes, through the Reeve. I'll answer the first question in regards to the hours. The hours that were posted on Facebook, that was soft opening hours, and that was to allow the library manager to receive some training on how to register patrons and issue cards. So it wasn't presented properly in there. That's not our proposed hours. Our proposed hours are 45 and a half hours per week, dependent upon the funding that we receive from both the Village of Glendon and the MD. And we also receive funding from the Alberta Government for $11,000. It's a per capita funding, and that doesn't change. So our budget will reflect that, our 2024 budget will reflect the funding that's needed to maintain those hours. So the second question that you asked was in regards to the funding that we're asking for, for the 2024 operating?
Well, it was kind of more related to Northern Lights Library System, because they fund the library. So you said something else, though, that is interesting. So you said the provincial government's going to fund you for $11,000?
Yes.
And so is that just a one-time thing, or is?
No, through the Reeve. The provincial funding of $11,000 is every year, and that's per capita. And Northern Lights Library System doesn't fund us at all. In fact, we pay them a levy. They don't provide any funding for us. So the funding that we're requesting from the MD, I'm not 100% sure how it works, but I believe it's the pool funding that the MD receives to help support libraries, so it would reduce the amount of money that's given to the other two libraries or to Bonneville in particular. I don't know how that works, actually, but.
I can, through the Reeve, I can add just a little bit to that. The funding that Northern Lights Library System provides to the two libraries is specific to the MD of Bonneville allocation from the province, from the provincial grant. So they apply for it on our behalf, and currently Counselor Scars, uh, Scarsen, Counselor Swager is correct, it is split between those two libraries. With the addition of the Glendon Library Board, it would be an option of council to direct Northern Lights Library System to share it three ways instead of two ways at your discretion, if that was your choice.
Yeah, because I really don't think it's her, she doesn't know the answer to that.
We're, we're asking her Northern Lights question, and that's not who she's representing. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Scarsen.
So this, I might say in here, but is it $20,000 a year you're asking for then?
Through the Reeve, what we're asking for today is a one-time support to help with our startup expenses, because we need a lot of equipment and books. The book collection has to be increased tenfold or more to be a public library. We need furniture. We need technology equipment. So that's what we're asking for today. We do plan on coming back early next year to ask for an annual operating fund assistance, and that's after, because next week, we'll be presenting to the Village of Glendon to ask them for their 2024 funding. So we're going to be asking them for $25,000 for every year for operating, and most likely $20,000 again from the MD for every year. But this ask today is a one-time help request just to help us with our startup.
Okay, and then I guess just on the yearly ask, to me, there is a big pool of money that goes to all the libraries. I, you know, I, to better prepare yourself, I think you need to have a number for, let's say, whether it's 10% of that or whatever it's going to be, right? You know what I mean? Because it's, whatever the split is now, what did you say it was? That's sort of 68 to 32 or something like that? So maybe it's 58 and 32 and 10 or whatever it might be, right? So I think you'll have better luck that way.
So through the Reeve, you're asking for us to get that information? We don't have that information.
Well, I mean, the Bonneville and Cold Lake Public Libraries come in, and they have that number from somewhere, right?
Oh, they do? Okay, interesting.
Yeah, because I know that Bonneville services Glendon area, right?
Right, yeah.
So they, I mean, they're probably going to tell you a number you don't want to hear, but I mean, there's, the numbers are somewhere. Someone got it, or someone figured it out, right?
Okay, yeah, I could request that information from Northern Lights Library System.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, it was just a comment. I, Counselor Scars, you sit on the Northern Lights Library Board?
Josh does.
Oh, Josh does. Well, I sat on.
No, no, he sits on the Bonneville Public Library. You said that.
No, I sit on the Northern Lights System Board.
So when I sat on that, it was too many years ago now, but when I sat on that board, Glendon actually had a rep, I think, on Northern Lights Library Board, so I don't know. Anyway, I guess you need to find a bit more information about that, because that might help you. Thank you.
Yeah, I got one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just seeing in the, in the budget here, and I don't see anything like a payment to, you were saying you guys will pay the Northern Lights Library System for their services, and I don't see anything in the budget under expenses for that. I see Northern Lights Library System labels at $350, but I don't.
That'd be in their operating expense, I'm guessing.
Through the Reeve, the answer to that question is our very first year, our levy was paid for by the Village of Glendon.
Okay.
So next year, it'll be $2,600.
$2,600, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this $33,000 is, this is startup. This is not.
This is startup, yeah, through the Reeve. This is startup, yeah. We do have our 2024 budget ready to prepare, to present to the village next week, and we'll have that with the, the amount. We're asking for $25,000. What the actual amount we get will be in the amended budget, which we'll be presenting to you as soon as possible.
So in, if this is a startup budget, not an operating budget, that's like, you make the page four in our package here, it says Village of Glendon funding $1,000, and MD funding $20,000, and then a $600 donation, and $11,761 for the provincial operating grant.
Yeah, through the Reeve, that's correct. And the reason it's only $1,000 from the village, because we didn't, we weren't, the board wasn't created until January. We had our first meeting in February, so we missed that December window to ask for money. We weren't a board yet. We weren't a library or a board yet to ask for more. And that $1,000 represents the minimum required by the municipality that created the, the library board.
Yeah.
To support us in order for us to qualify for the provincial grant. So that's where that amount came from.
Okay. And the provincial grant of $11,761, that's every year you'll get that?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be the same. It's a per capita amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Cotton? Well, thank you, Mrs. Cotton. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
So just to continue through the report, reference to our strategic plan, this is in support of goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. The cost is a source of funding. The cost amount request is $20,000. I believe it remained $20,000. Let me just check that.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
So I don't, I don't get that, because the, the option is to approve the amount of $9,000. Is that, am I missing something?
Sorry, I'm, I just wanted to confirm, just one quick sec, that it remains, it still remains. Oh, she's confident. You scared her away. Just kidding. Just wanted to make sure it reflected still, yeah, $20,000. So through the Reeve, the, the request currently our source of funding, we still have $9,000 remaining in the 2023 budget, council's budget for giving for these types of requests. As administration, our recommended action is to approve a contribution in the amount of 9,000, only because that's the remaining balance within the budget. However, if council so wishes to approve the full requested amount of $20,000, we would just be looking for direction from council as per options two and three under council options on where you would like us to, or sorry, option two, where you would like us to fund the shortfall.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, through the Reeve, thank you. So I guess if we have 9,000 in our giving budget, that's fine. I don't think we should be giving the full 20,000 if the Village of Glendon's only putting in 1,000. That seems kind of odd that they're asking for so much, such a large, much larger portion from the MD as opposed to the village. When it's, another question I have is the, the Northern Lights Library System, I know I sit on that committee, and I'm not, still don't fully understand how the, the grant works there. So we get a grant from the provincial government based on a per capita basis, and we pay the Northern Lights Library System, right?
Through, through the Reeve, when we had a library board, we would apply for it directly with that library board, and so that funding is available to us as the MD.
Yeah.
For library services. So instead, because the MD dissolved our library board, we went and entered into agreement with Northern Lights Library System, where they would apply for it on behalf of our residents, and then they would disseminate it out as we, they ask us every year how they, how they'd like us, or how we would like them to disseminate it.
Okay, so is the Village of Glendon having a new library, is that going to affect our operating grant that we were getting from the provincial government, or was it based just on MD residents before? Or was the, was the population of Village of Glendon included in that?
Through the Reeve, it is based on the MD population. So when council chose to follow the 68/32 ratio.
Yeah.
Between the two libraries, that is with the understanding that they're servicing MD residents as part of their services.
Okay.
So on estimation, back when this was all per capita, and council only provided based on, on that, they were saying essentially that the City of Cold Lake Libraries service 32% of MD residents, and the Town of Bonneville Libraries services 68% of all MD residents. So now with this additional entity, it, it does enter the question of what portion of the 68% that the Town of Bonneville Libraries services of MD residents is now going to be serviced by the Village of Glendon Library Board.
Yeah. So while, while I think it's great for the Village of Glendon to have a library, we have a certain amount of funding for our residents to have library services, and I'm, I'm not in favor of us putting a bunch more money in for library services. We can split, split it up different if we have to, and figure out what the usages in different libraries, and then split the funding accordingly. I think that would be a wise, wise way to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still not quite clear. Mrs. Cotton wasn't quite clear on the Northern Lights Library Board system, because she's talking about purchasing a bunch of books and doing a bunch of stuff. But, I mean, that was the benefit, I think, of Northern Lights Library System. They have a huge inventory of books, and so being a member of that library system, you just, you know, you request the books you want, and they deliver them to you. So I'm still not sure, it doesn't sound like they are going to be part of Northern Lights, and if they are, then they're going to get funding from some of Bonneville's funding. And the comment about, I get it, it's the Village of Glendon, but there's so many residents that live in the MD of Bonneville around Glendon that would use that library, because that's closer than Bonneville. And, and as long as they're part of Northern Lights Library Board, they have access to exactly the same books you can get in Bonneville or Cold Lake. So I'm still a little bit confused how they are going to get 11,000 a year from some provincial government thing that maybe other libraries could also get, but she didn't mention Northern Lights, so it's still not clear.
Yeah, but just like Counselor Scarsen told her, he says this is how it's going to be. I'm pretty sure the way he's explaining it, that if there's $10, we're just going to spend $10 throughout the MD. You might not have the portion that you think you're going to have, kind of thing. So we're going to keep the, what we give to the Northern Lights the same, but it's going to be divvied up. Is that what I'm getting?
Well, theoretically, we shouldn't have to spend any more money than we do right now on libraries, because we're servicing the MD as a whole right now.
Yes.
So, but transferring some of that over to the Glendon area would just make it easier for Glendon residents to use.
That's good, that's right.
Or Glendon area residents.
Well, that's kind of my point, though, is because it's not clear to me or anybody else here that, you know, do, do they need 20,000 from us, or they're going to get their, their portion from Northern Lights through us anyway?
Yeah, but this is, this isn't about.
This is for the startup, though.
This is for the startup. This is a, this ain't an annual thing. This is a one-time show here.
No, but you're, but you're right. It's a one-time show, but she mentioned they're going to buy a bunch of books and stuff. Well, do, if you're part of Northern Lights, you don't do that. You get them, anyway.
Okay, go ahead.
So being that I sit on the Northern Lights Library System Board, I'm aware that there's, there's a provincial operating grant for every community that has a library board. So the system is encouraging every municipality to start their own library board, because then we get, there's more money coming from the provincial government that way. My concern is, so I think they're getting probably about $6,000 for their, for starting a board, plus their operating grant, which is probably how that 11,000 comes about. I'm not sure if I'm 100% correct on that. But if, if it's going to cost the Village of Glendon $25,000 a year. But if, if it's going to cost, uh, the Village of Glendon twenty-five thousand dollars a year to operate the library, and they want twenty thousand from the M.D., that's forty-five thousand dollars a year to try and collect a eleven thousand dollar grant from the provincial government for everyone that already has library services. Which doesn't sound like a wise idea to me, I'm all for us reallocating part of our library funding to, to the Glendon Library, but not increasing it to just to some abstract twenty, plus twenty thousand dollars.
Well, I don't think that was the ask, though, that's not what she asked.
Well, they're asking for funding, today they're asking for funding for startup.
You're talking operating budget and startup budget, it's two different things, she was, she wasn't here to talk about operating whatsoever.
No, but you know as well as I do, that as soon as we, as soon as the, we give money for a startup, then there's, it's going to be an annual, she said right in her speech that they're going to come back for an annual ask.
No, ask will be money that we're already paying out.
Okay, as long as we're all clear on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Esther.
Through the reeve, just, just to clarify, there's two levels of giving to the libraries, there, there is the provincial grant we get through, and Northern Lights applies for and disseminates for us. And then, on top of that, there is our contribution that council agrees to within the budget, um, to the two libraries. So that amount is separate from that provincial grant that Northern Lights Regionals, the regional system disseminates for us. So there's two levels.
But that's still on that formula, isn't it, so much?
It's loosely based on that for, on the per capita formula, yes, on that ratio.
Again, once that formula is figured out, what Glendon's, that, that chunk will come off of that giving, and it'll be given to Glendon, I guess, if they have a, I don't know, I, that's as simple as I can put it, I guess, right? It's not like we're going to be, you know, they can ask, they can ask a hundred thousand dollars, it's not, you know what I mean, yeah.
Through the, uh, chair, I, I'm not sure if the Town of Bonneville Library gets Village of Glendon funding at this point, but if I was the Village of Glendon, I would have been asking how many of our residents do, do you serve?
Guaranteed that they do, I'd tell you right now that they do, I signed a library board for a while, and they do, and they also get it from Kihewin and I think Frog Lake as well, so they get it from other areas, for sure. So that's why I said, they're going to be taking away that portion that might be coming from Glendon, so by rights, they should be getting that money, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so, just to go back a bit with, um, the motion we just previously made about the six hundred thousand from operating, uh, surplus twenty-twenty-three, what's that amount? And was that allocated in the budget at all, or do we even know that amount yet?
Yeah, so through the reeve, uh, we don't have that total, uh, number yet, um, of the motion that we made and recommended, um, the use of twenty-twenty-three surplus funds for, um, that we made before. Uh, was based on the knowledge that we're sitting in at the end of November, and we haven't had a snow removal, uh, program. So we know that we're going to have a surplus fund, um, surplus due to that specific instance. I don't have the final number for, um, twenty-twenty-three yet, um, and we won't have until the audit is complete, probably, um, the end of February, middle of March.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so.
You're making a motion?
Well, I can't make a motion after I ask a question, sure, so, they asked for one thousand dollars from the Village of Glendon because they missed the, the cutoff. But they're coming to us at the end of November, asking for twenty thousand, which, well, you're recommending nine. Like, is, is our cutoff that much different than the Village of Glendon that we, they, like, we have unlimited cutoff dates, or something, they can ask that much more, or?
That's a tough question to.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, okay.
That we fund them the twenty thousand they asked for, and, uh, and Councillor Kravjak, uh, stated he would be willing to sit on that library board, so, we'll add his name, can we do that, it's part of that motion? So we'll point.
It's another, it's another motion.
Pardon me?
It's another motion, number three.
Okay, it looked like it was in the same one.
Uh.
No, it's in the same one.
Mr. Reeve, we can modify the option one from nine thousand to twenty thousand, but we would need, need more clarity as to where that source of funding would be, because the nine thousand is all that's available in the recommended source of funding in that motion.
Okay, and we can get that clarity from, uh, admin. And I, I'll just add to that, Mr. Reeve, if you, we'll get to your financial statement in a bit here, but there looked like a lot of projects that didn't get completed this year that, you know, maybe it's carryover, but it looks like there, I don't think we have a big issue with twenty thousand dollars.
Through the reeve, without, um, knowing the exact amount, I would say that that's a pretty good assumption, that we will likely have, um, an additional twenty thousand plus that six hundred thousand that, that, uh, we anticipate, um, as surplus in the snow removal budget. Unless we come up with a winter, um, a real winter now, until the end of the year, so, I, I would say that that's a safe assumption.
So, just making an assumption, what happens, this is say that, uh, come, uh, April, and you only have four hundred thousand left in surplus for twenty-twenty-three?
So, um, according to the Municipal Government Act, municipalities are not allowed to show a deficit, um, in any given year, so we would, um, be required to fund that, uh, likely from the cash flow reserve.
All right, uh, did we, is that?
I would feel more comfortable for now to wait for a while and just give them the nine thousand for now, and, and appoint Mike, uh, myself, but, uh, uh, we still haven't really, we don't really know where this, you know, we can assume that the, but we, you know. I guess it's not a lot of money to assume, I guess, but still.
This, well, because I kind of took, I think, cues from you guys, that it was a startup, so that they're going to ask for this money as a startup, and so, going forward, it comes from Northern Lights, so.
Yes, no.
No.
Comes from us.
Well, it comes from us through Northern Lights, or doesn't it, like, the, the money we're getting?
This just comes right from the M.D. of Glendon.
Yeah, but we've already, we've said, though, that, that budget that Northern Lights has gets distributed between Cold Lake and Bonneville, Bonneville's going to get less.
And Esther can clarify, the money that we dolled out is per capita, does not come from Northern Lights, we, we fund that.
Uh, through the reeve, that is correct, there's two levels here, there's what we put in our budget every year. That the M.D. Council approves.
And that's like twenty dollars or whatever per person.
Loosely-ish, yes.
Somewhere around there, I can't remember.
No, I get it, but my point was, it's not changing.
Yeah, but you guys keep on saying that it comes from the Northern Lights, and it doesn't, though.
Well, it's distributed by them, but it comes from us, you're right, you're right, but it's not changing, it's still.
I know, it's still the same dollar that comes from us.
Yep. Anyway, that was the motion, if, uh, if we're thinking maybe this isn't going to go, then, anyway, that's the motion.
So did we, we're just taking, we're taking the funds from the, the surplus two thousand twenty-three operating?
It, it would be more appropriate through the, the chair to, that, um, the funding come from the cash flow reserve, as much as that hurts me to say.
Well, eleven thousand if it can.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll come from the, the cash reserves, okay, that, so, let's write that motion so we can look at it, and we'll read it out.
And, and I just.
And we'll change the nine to twenty, and then we'll appoint Mr. Kravjak to the board.
And like Councillor Scarsen said, eleven thousand from cash flow reserves, and the nine thousand that we've already accounted for?
For now, but it can be changed back.
I would say, I would just maybe add too, that Mike felt very neglected during budget time, so he'd be very happy with this if it went through, so.
He's the only one that got a project in his word. Not the only one, yeah. I, I'll just say right now, I, I feel, feel the same as the reeve, that I'm not, I'd much more comfortable just leaving at the nine, but it's, the motion's been made, so, we can vote on that.
Stars, stars, I'm just.
Oh, if you buy.
Yep.
Uh, through the reeve, I understand, uh, just for added clarity, Northern Lights Library System, when a library does become a member, they, uh, do, uh, provide a, a hefty discount is available to the libraries individually as members to purchase books. Um, additionally, so they, they have a base inventory within the library itself, which is the books I believe Mrs. Cotton was referring to purchasing. Um, so through their membership, they do get a good discount through Northern Lights, um, but, uh, Councillor Swaggart is also correct, they have the inter, inter municipal library, uh, system as well, where books can be shipped back and forth from the larger inventory managed through Northern Lights Library System. We also have Northern Lights Library System coming as a delegation, um, coming up very shortly in the next month or two.
Okay, we have that written up, ladies, getting close here, okay. All right, thank you, uh, Councillor Scarsen, for making a mo, sorry, yeah, council, Councillor Swaggart, starts with an S, let's just get that out there. That council approves a contribution in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the Glendon Library Board towards their operating budget shortfall to be funded, with nine thousand coming from the two thousand twenty-three operating budget, and the remainder of eleven thousand coming from the cash flow reserve. And furthermore, that council approves appointing Councillor Kravjak to the newly formed Glendon Library Board for a two-year term expires in November, two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I got a little bit.
Deputy Reeve?
Thank you. Through the reeve, so the way the motion is right now, the M.D.'s going to be funding the startup at twenty thousand, and the Village of Glendon one thousand, and it's a library that's in the village for the village, I realize our residents will use it, but I don't think they'll be using it twenty times as much as the village, so, I'm not in favor, I guess, currently, the way it's written.
Yeah, I have to agree, uh, we're, we're paying the, the, the brunt of it, so I, I won't be in favor as this is either.
Any other comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. This is Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
On to eight point one.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, so today, we'll be looking at subdivision twenty-twenty-three dash S dash dash zero fifteen, uh, which takes place on northeast thirty-four, sixty, uh, four, and west of the fourth meridian. So the applicant has proposed the consolidation of the existing nine point seven-two acre parcel located on the northwestern corner of the subdivision. Um, and then it also proposes the subdivision of two, uh, parcels, one being twelve acres, and the other being six acres located in the southwest corner of, as can be seen on map, on the map, I believe that's under appendix. Hey, thank you. And if we could just scroll down, please, yeah, there we go. So notifications of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners, no concerns were received regarding this application. Uh, notice of the decision will be given to the applicant and relevant, uh, referral agencies. There are existing approaches to the proposed twelve acre parcel and to the balance of the quarter section, however, a new approach will be required, uh, to the proposed six acre parcel just south of the twelve acre parcel there. The subject parcels, uh, have a soil rating of eleven point nine, um, and as such, meet the requirements of the Municipal Government Act, Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, uh, the Municipal, uh, District of Bonneville, um, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. And so with that, it is being proposed that the subdivision be approved with the following seven conditions. One, that the owner install approaches, uh, including culverts and crossings. Two, the road widening be dedicated by caveat for five point eighteen meters along the entirety of the northern, um, side of the remnant parcel. Three, that municipal reserve be provided as cash and lieu for ten percent of the proposed parcels, and a deferred reserve caveat registered against the remnant. Four, that a real property report be provided. Five, that the sewage disposal shall be installed and comply to the Alberta Safety Codes. Uh, six, that the C.O.T. number nine four two, three four four, five four eight, zero eleven, uh, be consolidated to the remnant prior to registration of the proposed parcels. And seven, that all outstanding taxes be paid. Uh, if you have any questions at this time, I would be happy to answer them, thank you.
Yes, Deputy Reeve Crick?
Yeah, is that, uh, three thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, is that fairly standard? It just seems higher than what I was remembering in my mind from other subdivisions, or similar subdivisions.
Y- yes, so that's the, uh, per hectare cash and lieu, and then we take ten percent of that, actually, so. Um, but it's, all, all municipal reserve is based on the value of the land, so it'll vary from parcel to parcel, dependent on the, on the actual valuation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this, then.
All right, thank you, Councillor Crick. We're making a motion on behalf of council, that council approved subdivision application number two, zero, two, three, S, zero, one, five, to consolidate an existing nine point seven-two acre parcel into northeast thirty-four, sixty, fourth west of the fourth M. And furthermore, subdivided two parcels, one twelve acre and one six acre from the same agricultural quarter section for Alan and Deborah Anderson, as per the recommenda, sorry, as per the condition presented. Any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Reeve, just a, just a quick comment, uh, so, just to clarify, they could have had up to twenty acres, could they have? And so, is there, I'm just curious, is there logic to go on what they've done?
Uh, is there a reason for the consolidation?
No, I'm, I'm just asking for the twelve and six rather than two twenties or whatever, I mean, it's, just, it was just a question, it's.
Um, I'm not entirely sure for the reason of the split, and between the twelve and six acres, um, it's what they applied for, and what they're looking for.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just, the one, the six looks really, uh, uh, I don't know what the topography, topography's like, because it's heavily treated, and is it kind of buildable if they're trying to sell that, is it? I guess it meets all their other recom, all their other requirements, doesn't it?
Yeah, so, yes, um, so if they come in to apply, uh, for development, they would have to show, uh, buildable space at that time, um, but it is within, uh, within their rights to remove trees off of the property and to, um, and to create that developable space.
Right, any other? Nope, seeing that, I'll call for the vote, then. That's Carrie, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On to nine point two, point one.
Um, thank you, Mr. Reeve and council, um, this is to present amendments to bylaw number eighteen fifty, the Amending Master Rates Bylaw. Administration has prepared an amended master rates bylaw to update Schedule A, Master Rates and Fees, um, schedule for council's approval. Um, the following amendments have been made and are included in, in the attached bylaw eighteen fifty draft. Um, the water and sewer rates have increased, the consumption rates have increased from three twenty-seven to three seventy-seven. Sewer consumption rate increased, uh, from one oh three, uh, to one seventy-three per cubic meter, and, um, the, um, premises services with water only. Water consumption rate has increased from three twenty-seven to three seventy-seven. The bulk water service, uh, rate, uh, would see an increase from five fifty per cubic meter to, um, six dollars. Um, and those are, make up the extent of the changes, um, to the, uh, Master Rates Bylaw. Um, there are no additional cost implications associated with this recommendation, um, however, it would impact the two thousand twenty-four operating budget. Um, the, um, recommended action is that bylaw number one eight five zero, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend the Master Rates Bylaw, be given first reading.
Okay, thank you, looking for a motion, gentlemen?
All right. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion, that bylaw number eighteen-fifty, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend the master rates bylaw, to be given first reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote.
That's Carrie. Thank you. On to nine point two point two.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the unaudited financials. The purpose of the report is to present council with financial results for the third quarter ending September thirtieth. Regular quarterly or financially, financial reporting provides council with the required financial information to make informed business decisions and assist in meeting council's responsibility to the community, as well as adhering to the CIO's legislative responsibility to inform council. Appendix A is the statement of operations, which is our actual versus budgets, with the variations on the right-hand side. Appendix B is the statement of financial position, which shows the assets over liabilities. Appendix C is the schedule of reserves, with their amounts that we have remaining in their balances. Appendix D is the investment continuity schedule, so that shows it as of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And Appendix E is the capital project work-in-progress report that shows the approved budget amounts for each project, the project total where it sits as of September thirtieth, with their variances as of that time. There is no source of funding for this, and administration is asking council to accept the unaudited financial statements report for the 2023 third quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three as information. So if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing that, I'm looking for a motion, please. I'll make a motion, council accepts this information.
Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council accepts an audited financial statement report for the 2023 third quarter ending September thirtieth, 2023 as information. Any discussion? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, sorry. Yeah, yes. I'm looking at the variance report, and so have we talked about that yet? Have we-
The variance report on which one? They all have variances. So on the-
I guess I'll say Appendix E.
Appendix E, okay.
And maybe we need a bit more input from admin on some of these, because I looked through a variance report, and I look at the projects that, you know, you, there's a million bucks allocated, but only, maybe nothing spent or whatever. So, you know, I've highlighted a bunch of them. I guess I'll just ask.
Okay, yeah, all of these projects that you have, just to give you a little bit of information, have all been approved by council, and this is what we have for invoices as of today, or as of September thirtieth.
Yeah, and that's kind of my concern, is that we're in, we're at the end of, well, that was September thirtieth, so maybe a lot of them have been done now.
They have. There's a lot of them that have, invoices have come in.
And that, I guess that would be my concern. We're looking at them now, and I'm looking at, like, the second one on the list. We, a budget of four-hundred thousand, we hadn't spent anything in September, so maybe it's all done now, but that's consulting services, electronic data records. So that's, maybe it's done now, and we spent all the money?
That's in our IT department, and I think some of the, some of the invoices have come in, but it's not completed by any means yet. Some of these projects that are on this listing will be going into a carry forward.
Okay, so that, I guess maybe that, maybe I'm kind of asking the wrong questions now, because we probably have updated information now as of, from then.
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah. Through the Reeve. Yes, this report is dated, was postponed, our apologies, but we were dedicated to preparing the budget document, and so this got put to the side. So yes, it is a little late. And as, as most of you know, the construction season kind of only comes to an end in early October, and so there are a number of expenditures that wouldn't be reflected on this work-in-progress report until, until the final quarter of the year.
So rather than me going through every one of these that I've highlighted, because if you look at them, there's a lot that, we've got a lot of money that we haven't spent, according to this one. So I guess I'll just say, Mr. Reeve, we'll maybe look at this later, I don't know, before we finish all our budgeting or whatever, to find out how much money we do have left over.
Could we bring back a more updated report, because this is very easy for us to produce at a later time, if it's requested?
Sure.
Through the Reeve, typically, we wouldn't provide any further updated. These projects are already approved by council. They're already started, and the expectation is that the project would come in, if not on budget, very close to budget, for all of these work-in- project progress projects. So I'm not sure that it would relieve, I'm not sure that it would change the decisions that council would make, because these are projects that are already approved and already in progress.
Yeah, I'm just curious, though, are some of them, have we got extra money for these, though, or, anyway? Yeah. Okay, I'll just ask the water line one. So that was, the regional water line, is that, there's like two million left in that fund? Is that complete?
Do you know that? I'd have to ask.
Which item is that, sorry?
Well, it was the regional water line. I thought, I thought we finished that, actually, some time ago.
Four-point-five-three.
There's one, one point, or one-point-nine-seven-five million dollars left in that account.
Through the Reeve, I would have to have a look and see what that one-point-nine-million is earmarked for. If we had four-point-five budgeted at the, originally, I don't know why, we would be two million under budget for this. So if you let me flag that, and through, through the general manager of corporate services, we can maybe get a-
We can get a better picture for the next meeting.
Sure.
It's too hard.
Sure.
Okay, Counselor Swaggart?
Oh, sorry. Man, I'm having a hard time today.
Yeah, show me. Skarson, yes.
Got it.
So I, I mean, he kind of, Counselor Swaggart kind of asked the same thing I was going to ask, but a longer way of doing it. This report really is kind of useless to us right now, as it's presented, and without knowing project's status of where they're at, and how much is left to invoice, I mean, I don't even know why we're looking at this, to be honest. It's-
It's part of our financials, and again, sorry for the delay. We were working on budget. It was a priority.
Well, I guess better, I know, and I mean, I'm not trying to rebuttal you, but I'm just saying, like, if we're going to improve this, it should say status, our project update as to where we're at with the project, and how much invoicing is left, right? Because I think it's important for us to know if we are that far under budget, or if we're over, because I can look at, there's one that kind of stands out, and that's the ending Lake Boat Launch, where you're over budget, or whoever's over budget by $20,000. To me, that project looks like it's been done and invoiced, right? So I'm guessing that, you know, all these other ones are probably left to be invoiced. But I don't know if we're going to be over or under, right? So I don't even need a response. I'm just telling you that to that would-
I think going forward, one of the things that finance has to do is make sure that we are bringing back our third quarter financials on a timely basis, and not letting budget also kind of, like, this year we were a little bit understaffed. So, yeah, once again, my apologies, but we have to try better on getting these back to council on a timely matter.
Well, I think just a, like, a pro, like, I think we've seen it in the past, a progress hundred percent, ninety percent, whatever, and then, you know, in, a little column at the end is saying invoices all paid, or whatever, right? Yes or no, and then we know, you know.
So a little bit more detail on that one with this report here.
Yeah, because as this is presented, is really, to me, it's just not even, I mean, it's good info, but it's not really useful info, that's all.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing, did we make a motion? Yeah, we did. Another S-word, yes. All right, I'll call for the vote. Hey, that's Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too. And sorry, council, I'm getting names mixed up quite a bit today, so.
No, just two names.
Yeah, take me to the back and give me a workover, yeah. Okay, we're on to nine-point-three-point-one.
Morning, Mr. Reeve.
Morning, council.
Members of council, I'm here with policy number four-B point zero-one-zero, water and sewer policy amendment. Policy four-B point zero-one-zero water and sewer policy was due for review in 2021. Administration presented the changes to council at the water and sewer workshop held on October thirty-first, 2023. After discussion, additional changes were incorporated into the policy and presented as Appendix A. Significant changes include having accounts in the landowner's name only, and removing renters from the application process, and moving items from the water and sewer bylaw that were not relevant to the bylaw, and incorporating them into the policy. There are no budgetary impacts, and the communication will be posted, the new policy would be posted on the MD website, and it's administration's recommendation that council adopts amending policy C dash four-B point zero-one-zero water and sewer policy, what?
Yeah, but he started, he started on nine-point-three.
Nine-point-two.
Point-one. This is nine-point-three-point-two.
Oh.
That's okay.
Sorry, my-
Well, you're almost done.
I apologize. My, I have it labeled wrong, so I apologize. I thought we were on the-
Well, we might as well finish that one, right? You did it all already.
Unless you want to do it all over again, but, okay. My apologies, council. So I, it's recommended that we adopt policy C four-B point zero-one-zero water and sewer service policy as presented.
So we're on nine-point-three-point-one, correct?
That would be two.
Now?
Nine-point-three-point-two.
Okay.
My apologies again. I mislabeled.
I'm flipping back. I got you now. Okay, any discussion on this, gentlemen?
Oh, I forgot the right one opened. I gotta repeat.
Okay.
Sorry, nine-point-three-point-two.
Anyone like to make a motion?
To do-
I just, I just thought you were starting with the second one for some reason, so I didn't stop you, but you're such on, such a roll.
My apology. I have, all my RFDs are labeled, and I had the wrong number on-
You're human. You're human, Brian. Very good. I'm glad to hear that. Anyone want to make a motion for nine-point-three-point-two?
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council adopts amending policy number C four-B zero-one-zero water and sewer service policy as presented. Any discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, but I do have some questions with that, Mr. Spolko. So policy, prayer one, it just says that landowners are responsible, may, are, may be responsible to abide by and bear the entire cost or portion thereof, of some of the following conditions. Like, how will that, it sounds like some people may not have to pay as much as others, but what are their kind of stipulations there for, when you say, you know, may or may not?
Okay, through the, through the Reeve, some of these conditions, like providing professional engineering study to determine the flow supply requirements. If there is no question that, that the supply will feed the customer, then we may waive that requirement. However, let's say somebody wants to apply for water, a developer wants to apply for a thirty-lot subdivision. We may get them to provide a professional engineering, so that's the reason why they may have to abide by these, or they may not, depending on the circumstance. Does that answer your question?
Well, okay, so let's, let's look at D then, performing underground utility searches and exposure of utility if required.
Yep.
So they may or may not have to pay for that, though?
So through the Reeve, they may have to perform, if there are no underground utilities, there's nothing to look for. So they may have to do it, or they may not.
No, but they're tying into a water line, right? This, aren't we talking-
Correct.
Yeah, so if they're gonna, if they're gonna tie into a water line, they'd have to expose it, but this is saying they may or not, may or may not have to pay for it, to expose it.
This, this refers to any other additional utility, so telephone, power, gas, that kind of thing. They, they have to, at the end of the day, they have to, they're going to be responsible to do the, the one call. That's what this is. They, they have to do the one call. They have to locate the utilities.
Okay.
And if there's no requirement for that, then they don't have to. Like, if, if there's a-
So you're not talking about, you're not actually talking about a water line, you're talking about a gas line or a-
Correct.
Phone line or something.
And let's say the, the utility is, the water, the water line is attached to the main line, and it's at the property line already. All they have to do is go down and tie on to the, the meter vault. There would be no need for us to require them to do that. They would have to do that on their own property. So again, that's why there's a, they may have to, or they may not. It's all part of the conditions that we could implement if we needed.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Who made that motion? Counselor Slipcheck, correct? Yeah. All right, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie. On to nine-point-three-point-one.
We'll get back on track here. Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
Now, we are on the, now we're on the bylaw number one-eight-four-eight water and sewer bylaw. Due to the changes requested by council, bylaw one-triple-six water and sewer bylaw required revisions. Administration has revised the content of the bylaw and is requesting that this revision be adopted as the new water and sewer bylaw and the current bylaw one-six-six-six be repea- repealed. As the new water and sewer bylaw references the new master rates bylaw presented today, the changes to the, to bylaw one-triple-six needs need to be made as to not have conflicting bylaws. Significant changes to the revised bylaws are reference to the current MD master rates bylaw, removal of the adjacent landowner connection criteria, removal of reference to renters as connections are to be applied for by landowners only, removal of the water service deposit as connections are to be applied for by the landowner only, implementation of ninety-day arrears to be applied to tax roll of the property, removal of sewage disposal at the municipal lagoons, and integration of amendments made by bylaw one-six-six-six when the master rates bylaw was passed. Attached for council to review is Appendix A, the new current bylaw number one-eight-four-eight water and sewer bylaw, and the current bylaw one-six-six-six water and sewer bylaw. Reference to the strategic plan is goal number three, promote community development and potable water access for population clusters. No budgetary impact. Communication of the new bylaw will be posted on the MD public website, and it's administration's recommendation that bylaw one-eight-four-eight, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to regulate the connection and use of public water systems and sanitary sewer systems, be given first reading. And there's other options for council to choose from as well.
All right, thank you.
I'll move first reading.
Right on. Okay, thank you, council, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion. On behalf of council, that bylaw number eighteen-forty-eight, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to regulate the connection and use of public water systems and sanitary sewer systems, be given first reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you. On to nine-point-three-point-three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of council, we're here for the Infrastructure Services Department 2023 Third Quarterly Report. Infrastructure Services has prepared quarterly quarterly updates for council for Q3. Transportation update will be presented- Transportation update will be presented by Monte D'Anenco, manager of transportation. Fleet facilities and utilities update will be presented by Lautre Levin, manager of fleet facilities and utilities. Uh, transportation report is attached as appendix A, fleet facilities and utilities report is attached as, is attached as appendix B. And I'll have, uh, Monte D'Anenco come up and present the, uh, transportation quarterly report.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Morning.
So this is the third quarter transportation report. Uh, roadside brushing and ditch improvements, this season's project consisted of twenty-one point two kilometers to be cleared of all trees within the right of way, debris removed and drainage slopes improved when necessary. Contractor is currently working on the last location, this was at the time of this, they're complete now. Um, this year, we were in the Bonneville area, we're separating into three separate areas per year to avoid lots of mo- uh, mobilization costs. Uh, the purpose is to improve drainage, visibility, structure of road, and room for, for snow storage in the wintertime. This year's rip and relay program saw eleven separate locations completed totaling thirteen miles. Some locations required additional subgrade preparation and the addition of some gravel, used some more coarse gravel, um, to improve the structural stability. Uh, the shoulder pull program, we performed, self-performed, this was none, none of this was contracted out like previous years. Uh, nine separate shoulder pull locations totaling ten point five miles. The road width brought to standard, soft spots repaired and shoulders and crowns reestablished to acceptable and manageable standards. The gravelling program this year saw thirty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine tons of gravel for the general maintenance of the M D's roads. This represents a hundred and sixteen and a half miles of roads, and then throughout the year, an additional forty-seven hundred and change tones was utilized on smaller spot repairs, which included potholes, washouts, and approaches. The dust control program started on June the fifth. There were seven cold mix locations completed, as well as additional small repairs to some existing cold mix dust controls. And there were twenty-seven M G thirty locations for a total of sixty-five hundred linear meters that received M G thirty. This, uh, project wrapped up July twenty-sixth, this does not include the portions done by industry, which is quite extensive as well. Uh, drainage improvements. We obtained the A E P A Water Act approvals for Range Road four sixty-one culvert replacement, which is just south of six ten. And for Range Road four sixty-three culvert replacement north of six sixty. Uh, verified approvals for Vincent Creek ditch, which is from the power station road coming this way up to six sixty, we're currently working on that now. Uh, Water Act approval applications are in progress for another culvert on six ten. And we completed a portion of the Crane Lake master drainage plan, we self-performed, um, an eighty meter long culvert with some cleanouts, which greatly alleviated a lot of the flooding, uh, concerns in one of the, in one of the subdivisions there. So we're currently working on two drainage concerns throughout the winter in the immediate future. Asphalt crack sealing, we performed two hundred and forty-seven kilometers of roadways. Uh, the Bonneville Airport was also completed, which included a runway, apron, and taxiway entrance. And this project completed on August thirty-first, we got all of our highway, all of our asphalt roads and some subdivisions completed. So next year, we'll probably, we'll be focusing on a lot of subdivisions. I'll put on R F T for the two thousand and twenty-three road sand supply and calcium chloride mixing, uh, it was awarded September twenty-sixth. We had some leftover from last year, so we only had four thousand tones required this year as opposed to eight last year. And it was hauled in and mixed with, uh, with calcium chloride, and it's currently ready to go in our, in our tent. Some additional works we performed, we assisted with the construction of an additional parking lot to accommodate winter activities at Canusa Ridge. If you've ever been there in the winter on a busy day, they're lined up all the way along the road, so this will help alleviate some of that congestion.
So how many, how many stalls or whatever did you guys make there?
I'm not sure, I think it's twenty-five or something like that, is what the initial, uh, layout that I saw was.
Is it kind of like off, off that way then, or?
It's before you get around that last curve right on the right-hand side there, just, just this, this side of the, uh, of the lift, the bottom of the lift. There's a lot of facilities needed to be moved and some, uh, some above ground electrical lines as well, so. We also completed the remain, remainder of the landscaping and drainage work for the Ardmore Community Society. Um, it involved removing the unsuitables from the existing pile and using the remainder of it to regrade the campground area, and did some, also some grading around the building, there were some drainage issues due to some settlement. Uh, we installed some barriers around the propane and septic tank, and also a chain gate to prevent public parking with the Zamboni route, which, which was dragging some salt onto the ice surface. Uh, we also took over a roadway, uh, Range Road four seventy-four from six twenty-two to six twenty-three, it was an undeveloped road allowance. Uh, one of the, our industry partners requested, um, to construct this road, which they, they constructed on their, on their dollar, and it was completed in, end of two thousand and twenty-two, they did some, uh, some touch-up work here this year, and we accepted it, so it's another asset that Bonneville has. It ties in six twenty-two to six twenty-three, the rationale was to, uh, have their traffic go by less, uh, residential places in that area. Our concern line, here's a chart of our concern line per quarter. So, all calls we serve by the, by the infrastructure department are logged and tracked, they are then prioritized and actioned according to severity. Um, at the time of this, ninety percent of the concerns are dealt with within five days typically. Others require more time to research the history or gather more information to effectively implement the corrective action, uh, especially with drainage issues, we have all kinds of technology now with, with LiDAR and, and, uh, stuff available to us to determine the, the proper routes of flow and so on. Um, any outstanding concerns are reviewed on a weekly basis, at the time of this publishing, there were nine outstanding concerns as of the November third, and the weekend in November third, and two of those were road-related and have since been actioned. As of last Friday, there were ten, not the same ten of this nine. Um, and of those, six of them were, were brushing concerns because of that wind we had a week or so ago, so six of them have been, have been dealt with. And that's all I have, any questions?
Counselor Scarsen.
Um, just with your, uh, sorry, with your concerns reports. So how, how often, so you have a list that you guys get distributed every week kind of thing?
Every day, we get, it comes out at four thirty every day for the daily concerns, and then at the end of the week, we get a, 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 an updated one with the, with the week's concerns and the ones that haven't been addressed yet.
And you, sorry, do you end up getting a, um, a monthly summary too then?
Through the Reeve, yes, we get a monthly summary as well.
Okay, I would like to, uh, make a motion right now that we add the council to the monthly summary of this concern list.
All in favor?
Okay, I would like to wait exactly how you want to put it?
Yeah.
The, uh, through the Reeve, if I may, uh, we had a, the C A O obtained a legal opinion on, and I believe he shared that with, uh, with the Reeve, on, uh, sharing the content of the, uh, concerns list with, uh, with the.
People's names on it?
People's names and everything like that, so, uh, I just want to bring that back up, uh, further to, uh, Counselor Scarsen's motion, that, that was also, uh, an issue, uh, for publishing or, or submitting the, uh, uh, or distributing the concerns list to all of council, so.
So could we have a concerns list that came in camera to us then?
Well, because that was the bank, the, uh, checks list.
I think it was both.
Both.
Yeah.
It was, it was, it was both, so, uh, before I can say one way or the other, I would have to, uh, uh, the C A O had more information on the legalities of it than, than I do, I just wanted to bring that up for, uh, for council so that they knew that there was a legal, uh, implication of bringing the concerns list publicly, publicly to a council meeting, or, or distributing it to all of council, so, um.
Sorry, and I'm just gonna question you a bit on this because, I mean, we used to get it all the time, and it was emailed, it wasn't brought up at council or whatever. And, um, so I'm, I'm confused, so now I'm team staff can look at it, but council count, is that what you're saying?
Uh, through the Reeve, that is what the legal opinion was, uh, if it doesn't have, and I'm paraphrasing here, but if it doesn't have anything to do with the business of council, then it isn't part of what information council would get.
It does have everything to do with business.
Fair enough, and that's a fair argument, and I'm not going to argue that that was a legal opinion that we got. Uh, and I'm not here to argue a legal opinion, I'm just here to, just to inform council that there was a legal opinion about sharing this information, and that is the, that's the information that we got back, so.
To be honest, I would be completely satisfied with the names redacted from this list, if it said, uh, the area were one, two, three, four, this was a concern, and this is how it was remedied, I'd be fine with that even.
So, uh, through the Reeve, my question would be to, to council is, are you guys getting calls that were not responding to the concerns? Because if that, if that's the case, then that's something that I have to deal with, with my team.
I don't think that's the case, so Brian, I'm saying that, let's say, for example, there's one road in particular, I'm just using this as an example, that is constantly being questioned, being concerned about.
Sure.
I mean, I have no idea, right? Because people don't call me, I'm, I spent the first four years telling people to call this number, and that's what they've been doing, and that's great, it's working. But how am I supposed to have, make decisions of problem areas if I don't know what problem areas are?
Uh, through the Reeve, my answer to that would be, administration looks at these, uh, at these lists. If we see problem roads, even though we fix them, let's say a pothole is occurring on, on this one road, as administration, we come back to council and say, okay, this road, we've received many calls on it, we think we need to, uh, to action it by rip and relaying the whole road. That's how that information comes to council. Through the concern line, we know that we've dealt with this a bunch of times, we know that it's costing us more to maintain it than it would be for us to repair it completely. We would come to you as a capital project or an operational, uh, through an operational budget, to come to you and say, this is what we need to do. Again, my question would be is, if, and then if you're getting calls that were not responding to, to the concern line, that's an issue that I can deal with internally. So, I just, a- and I understand that you guys have, uh, council has been privy to, uh, to the concerns list for many, many years prior to this, that didn't make it legal. And again, I, I'm not here to argue the legalities of, of sharing this information, that's just the opinion, the legal opinion that we got about sharing this information.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Counselors Scarsen, though, uh, you know, we didn't have that concerns list, and we didn't have that phone service years ago, and, and so residents would call councilors, because that's what they elected us to do, right? So, um, when they came up with the concerns hotline, I thought, well, that's a great deal, because we were getting, I said to residents, call in, and, and, uh, I said, you'll get way faster response if you call it, or if, because if I call it in, or if I get hold of a administrator or whatever, it's going to take a little longer for it to go through the system. And so I, I think it, I think it was working fine, but I had also told them, call in because, uh, council can follow up right away with that concerns list, you know, we'll know you called in. But then we quit getting it a couple of years ago, and then so we lost that connection, so it's not, we're just, I'll just tell them to call me again, instead of the concerns line, and then I'll know that they've called me and I'll pass it on to you.
Then I'll know.
Okay, thank you, uh.
So the, pardon me, I don't recall the exact wording of the, the legal opinion, but, um, it was to do with, um, if council, um, needs it for a specific purpose, and if, so my question then is, what purpose would council need the concerns list?
It's for information, and I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused as to the reluctance of administration to share that list with us. It makes it, it makes me want it even more now, right? So, I know that when it was with the check registry, or the check, the, Al said, if the names are off it, you can look at it, but then it's useless to you, and that, I said, well, that's fine, this is first I heard about the concerns list, I don't know. If the names are off of it, I think there's still lots of value in it, myself, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, and the motion's up there, so.
Yes, Counselor Slipcheck.
Yeah, I got a few questions and a comment to make on this, uh, concern list. I know I get calls, I tell them the phone, the eight one two number, five thousand, they call me. And I've only had a couple of times where they called back, of the two years, called back, say that, uh, nothing was done three days later. Follow up, it gets done, it's just kind of, we're busy at the time. But if I, it doesn't get done, what their complaint is, they call you back, well, in my area, anyway. So on that, and that's why I want to make that comment. On the dust control program, you've got seven cold mix locations, we're completing.
One second, we're on the, we gotta discuss the motion first, Donnie. Don't we?
Well, it's about.
What's that?
The motion.
It is?
I mean, motion, that's what we're discussing right now.
Oh, which, oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Listen, I, I'll make it clear that I don't, I don't for a second think that it's because you guys aren't doing what we asked you to do, I mean, that's not the intent at all, right? To me, it's the information that I think is important for us to know, that's all there is to it.
Yes, I think it's also important that I know what's going on in anybody else's word. I mean, if we've, if, you know, we're trying to do the best for the whole M D, and if I find out that there's one word where they have a huge dust control problem or whatever, and it's, and it's not getting act, or it's not getting actioned, or it is getting actioned, then at least we know that, we can put money toward that sort of thing, as a counselor.
Well, through the Reeve, that would be, that's administration's job to bring that information, uh, back to council through reports, through, uh, uh, budgeting, that kind of thing. Um, again, I, in an effort to try to make council's life easier, uh, to handle these, uh, one-off calls, that, that's what we're doing here. Um, it comes in, it gets actioned, it gets done, if the, if the problem is bigger than what, uh, you know, what we have budgeted for in that current year, we'll come back to council and say, this is an issue, it's ongoing, we've had many concerns. We need extra dollars or, or extra, uh, uh, equipment, whatever, to, uh, to, to rectify this issue. Um, it, it just seems to me that it would be plugging up council's emails with, uh, with stuff that's already been handled. And, and to me, it just, it, if, if somebody calls in and says, I need, uh, I want a road graded, and we grade it, and it's done, um, I, I, or, or a tree is across the road, I, I don't know if that's something that, I mean, if council wants they, to be bombarded with all that kind of stuff, okay, fine, but, uh, but again, it's, uh, it, it's stuff that's being handled internally by, by administration and the staff, that, uh, in an effort to make council's jobs a little easier, and then when, when a call comes into a counselor, the first thing it does is, uh, uh, if it comes directly to me, I forward that on to my managers and the, uh, and the administrative staff to put it on the concerns list immediately. So I, I would, I would argue the fact that it, coming through a counselor to administration takes a little longer to get through the process. Uh, the second I get a phone call or an email from a counselor, it goes on the concerns list, and it gets actioned accordingly. So it, it doesn't take long to get through the process. So, again, uh, whatever council decides, but I just want to make the point that, uh, that we did have the legal opinion, and, and if it, stuff has to be redacted, then that's additional administrative time, I mean, sometimes we'll have, uh, uh, you know, a hundred calls in a day, especially in the wintertime.
So. I'll tell you now, to delete a column in an Excel sheet is pretty easy. I'm sorry now, to delete a column in an Excel sheet is pretty easy, all right? So you're, you're not gonna miss it, and if it means that we need to delete the names, then so be it.
And Mr. Reeve, I'm surprised, like, I, I, you know, I would think, you know, maybe you're right, as far as, as some information to the public, but we're council, you think that council would, I mean, we're responsible for spending at the M D, we're responsible for the M D, and if we can't, I don't get that, like, make, let's give it to us in, like the reef said, in camera, and it's within, you know, in this session.
Once, once again, I'll, I'll just reiterate that, the legal opinion said that if it's not part of council business, then that information is not automatically given to council, so, again, I'm not gonna argue what the, what the legal, what the legal opinion was, if you want that, I would suggest that maybe you get a, an explanation of the legal opinion from the lawyer that gave it to us, as to why this information is not to be shared, I, that's all I can say about that.
I, I can't, I certainly can't offer the answers you may be looking for, but just from a FOIP perspective of the legal opinion we received, that's the primary concern. Even internally, the FOIP regulate, the FOIP Act does not even necessarily departments to share information if it's not required operationally, there are certain exceptions with regards to some of the information that I believe tax and assessment collects, but even if I have someone's personal information, I'm not even necessarily allowed to just share that with any department, just because they're part of the M D, if they don't genuinely need it for operational purposes. So my understanding of the legal opinion with regards to sharing the personal information of these concerns that come in is justifying to a court, council's necessity to know those names for them to do their responsibilities, and not, and I'm not here to say whether or not it's necessary, it's my understanding that that's the primary overarching concern with the legal opinion, is being able to justify to a court of law, your necessity to know that, that personal information to do your duties as council.
Oh, my God.
I'm pretty sure, and like, I'm not, sorry.
Talking about this five thousand, but when we were talking about, sorry? Yeah, the checkers, it said that we could look at it, like, it's not, we could look at it in camera if everyone wished to.
You could, but there's still, so where it said you could is that it's, it would, they still weren't confident in the ability to justify to a court if it ever came up, that that was genuinely necessary for you to do your job as council, to know the names, and that personal information.
That's ridiculous. That seems just.
I said, I can't, I'm not saying whether or not it's necess, I'm not picking a side, I'm just, that's my understanding from a FOIP perspective of the legal opinion that was received.
I'm thinking Counselor Scarsen here thinks it's necessary for himself to be a counselor, and then, you know, I can't, I can't, I can't say that I disagree with him.
That's my understanding, yeah.
So if it's a check registry or, or this five, five thousand number, if he thinks it's necessary for him to make decisions, like, why am I the one to argue with him? I, like, I. Any else, any other comments, or?
Well, the only comment I'll make is that if it's necessary, that it's reads that with names or personal information is redacted, then that's, I'm fine with that, right? If that needs to go in the motion, for you to make it easier, but to me, it's not even a fluke issue if we don't have any personal information in there, so. Well, I would just say that to present to our, to distribute to council as you can, right?
It's, it's weird, Counselor Scarsen, and Mr. Reeve, cause I, you know, I think we need to have that information, these folks call, you know, they'll call me, some of them will call me and say, well, you're, you're my counselor, you're hired, you're elected and hired, you call it in, so I will call them in, so now I'm not even allowed to know that I'm, you know, I, I can't talk to these people anymore, because I, I'm not allowed, it's gotta be redacted, so it's kind of fishy, it's kind of weird.
No, but what I just said, like, I just, what I remember is that you can, you can have all this information on an in-camera thing if you want it, with names and all, that it says, that's what it says in the, when we got our, that lawyers approved, for the check or for the five thousand, it didn't say you cannot, but if you wanted to do it in camera, it says you may. Do you wanna change your motion in any way, or you wanna leave it like that, Counselor Scarsen?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and I mean, it doesn't, so as this sits, you're saying that it would be part of an agenda package then? Like, I'm, in my mind, it's emailed out as it is with the rest of your, I mean, it seems like there's a whole group that gets it except for us, right? So why, to that, just add all council to that email? Like, how would you, how would you present it then?
You know what, through the reef, to Counselor Scarsen, I would present it however it's legally possible to present it. I, I'm not trying to hide anything, it's just that the volume of concerns that we get, and we handle immediately, I mean, to me, just seems like a waste of, of.
Time?
Of, of time for council to see that, and all you would see on a, on a redacted list was, there was a tree on Range Road four, four, two.
Perfect.
And that's it, that, that's all you would see. If that's what council wants to see, then I, I guess we could, however it's legally able for us to, to present it, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Could, could, could we go back and just, like, get more information on how to do this properly, and how, cause I know all of counseling here, but.
Well, that's what I was suggesting, is that if you wanted this, and, and to understand the, the FOIP issues that we may be facing, I would suggest that, you know, get that legal explanation from someone better than myself to, to explain it.
It's just, it's just all very confusing, because, I mean, for years, we got this report, then all of a sudden, we didn't, and then we asked for it, never got it, never got it, then all of a sudden, it's a legal issue, and now ask for it again, and I'm, there's so much pushback, I don't even understand it anymore, why, there's so much reluctance to share the concerns report, it's mind-boggling, to be honest, so, whatever you gotta do to get that report in my hands, please do it, all right? If it takes this motion to do it, it's up there to do, so.
And Mr. Reeve, you said you've seen the legal opinion.
Sorry?
You've, you've seen the legal opinion, you read the legal opinion.
Yeah, absolutely, I have.
Well, so, I'm not sure why you're questioning, like, I don't get it, like, if it has to be in a, in an in-camera package, then I'm, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, and Steph, your point on that?
So the, the, the legal opinion, even with regards to viewing it in closed session, was that, and I'm paraphrasing, paraphrasing, when they, the, the response was that it is difficult to see how a review of an unredacted version of the check register is necessary to perform the duties, while they certainly have the, it, it's certainly important to be informed about the operations of the municipality, that was their concern, was just primarily the justification of viewing it in the unredacted form.
So they didn't specifically mention the concerns list as well? Cause it seems like you're talking about the check registry.
Yeah, I'm talking about the check, that's, but it wouldn't be much different.
It would be the same, same information.
So a redacted concerns list, to me, is much more valuable than just seeing a bunch of numbers on a checklist.
From a FOIP perspective, my, myself personally, I, as long as it's redacted, that would be my biggest concern for my, for my reduction.
Oh, sorry, I'm just reading back on my notes, sorry about that.
Through the reef, so in order to move this issue along, perhaps we can arrange to have a meeting with the, our representative that provided the legal opinion in the first place, so that council could ask questions directly, and, cause we're now kind of playing, we're in the middle of, of trying to do the right thing for the FOIP requirements that have been placed on us, and, and that's our job, is to provide council with the best advice that we have, which we're doing, if you have concerns with that advice, then we certainly could arrange to have a legal representative come in, just as we did this morning in the in-camera session, to address any questions that you might have about it. Administration is not trying to hide anything from council, it is a matter of whether it is useful information to council in order to make any decisions that they might need to make.
Well, it seems that administration is deciding whether it's useful information or not letting us decide if it's useful information, right? I think that should be us deciding if it's useful to us or not, to say that an extra email a month is gonna bog down my email.
With, with all due respect, it's not administration deciding, it's, it's the advice that we've received from our lawyer, that we would provide, we can provide a redacted piece of information to you, whether it provides you with what you're looking for or not is beside the point, and, and all that would do is create another level of workload, so to the administration, and then it already exists, so that's what the issue is, it's not that we're trying to hide anything, it's only, it's merely that we're trying to adhere to the legislation that's in place, and.
So we used to break the, the rules years ago?
That's correct.
I believe you did.
That's correct.
Can I just, Mr. Reeve, can we just make, we'll have to make sure we clarify, though, that that's, this is information for council, not for general public, I think that's a really big difference, isn't it? So just clarify that, I still like your motion, though.
So I mean, every time that anyone, I mean, we see it over and over, any person's name now cannot be mentioned or brought up in council anymore, like?
It, it depends on the situation.
I feel like this FOIP thing was geared around the check registry, and you are now maybe using it as something for the concerns list as well, because I don't, what personal information is it that you're sharing, someone's name?
That is personal, that's considered personal information.
Okay, so then every time someone's name is mentioned in council is a FOIP, is that what you, you know what, I'll just, I'll end this right now, I'll make the motion to say, bring in the lawyer, and we'll have the discussion with him, and ask the questions.
Sure.
Perfect.
All right? So modify it to say that, and bring in the lawyer for the next council meeting, for an in-person, and we'll have that discussion.
I think that's fair, that's the best way to go about this, thank you.
I would just, just add to that, that it's, if it's possible to have at the next council meeting, their schedule may be booked.
Whatever council meeting, we can get him in next, is that fair? Yes. When is our next council meeting? December twelve? Yeah, should be. Should be plenty of time.
Mr. Reeve, Miss Belkow, can I just ask you about the hardship number, so that's kind of the biggest number, and it was a hundred and sixty, and so is, is that, you know, what do, what can we take from that number, is that a hundred and sixty people called, maybe, and eighty of them received it, or how, how do we know what happened there?
Through the reef, a hundred and sixty calls in the first quarter for hardships. What that would have been was, they called for snow plowing services, of that one sixty, did all one sixty of them get snow plowed? I, I can't answer that right now, what I can say is that all one hundred and sixty got addressed, they may have called for a half an inch of snow, and we do, we, we chatted about that earlier, where there's an abuse of the program, so, did all one sixty get plowed out? Perhaps, but guaranteed, all one sixty got addressed.
Okay, so for my, for my, for my perspective, though, the hardship, or sorry, that, that concerns report that we used to get would tell us that, cause it would, there's a column there, it was actioned or it wasn't, and reasons why, that sort of thing, so, you know, that was, that's pretty useful for me, and I can go back to those folks and say, you know, sorry, you didn't make the cut because of this, or whatever, but, yeah.
Through the reef, that would be redacted information, then.
Well, not necessarily, we haven't decided that yet.
True, but if, okay.
Well, the name would, so he would never know.
You'd never, all you'd know is that it's a hardship, there'd be no name, no address.
And I might, I got this road, and this is why I called, I mean, we could put two and two together, right?
That's right, but you would have no, no name, no address, no phone number, all you would see is hardship, and, and that's it.
Well, not necessarily, we've got a motion, have we voted on that yet?
No, but it's a different motion, though.
No, but it's still.
So at this, okay, I'm just gonna read the motion, then we can have some discussion. Okay, thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council, the council directs administration to arrange in-camera meeting with the legal to provide information pertaining to the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act at the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of council. Any discussion on this? So we can ask about the check registry, the same, at that, if we want to, it's all the same pot?
Yeah.
Any, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote, I think all our computers are off. That's Carrie, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Denny ankle? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Sutcher.
Okay, on dust control program, you said you got, did seven cold mixed locations, what, you figure those seven cold mixed locations, what was the kilometers on those, you figure, or were they just in front of residents?
Through the reef, to Counselors Sutcher, yes, they're just in front of residents, so two hundred meters each.
So they were just residents, all seven?
Yes.
Okay, I got another question here, and concerns. On your first quarter, where was that number? Road concerns, one twenty-three, January to March, what kind of road concerns would that be, like, for a hundred and twenty-three of them, like, during the, the march, cause it can't be, uh, snow, is it, or? Cause there's snows over there, but could you tell me what those hundred and twenty-three concerns would relate to mostly in the first quarter?
For the first quarter? They're typically road concern. So, so icy roads.
Okay, so that all goes in there, like, say, potholes and washboards all go together?
Through the reef, absolutely, yes.
Probably sanding and snow plowing and stuff like that as well?
Okay.
So through the reef, each time it snows, or there's a little bit of a drift, we get, we get lots of, of calls letting us know that the roads are icy, a lot of them, we've already been on, we, we check that resource road on a regular basis, we're already out there a lot of times, and, but we still capture it on the concerns list.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, are you done, Mr.?
Okay. Yeah, that, that was an interesting point, though, you know, this may be more useful, though, if, if we could even break it up by ward, so that, you know, that would maybe show, maybe there's no concerns in my ward, but if you showed road concerns per ward or something, or even all of them per, per ward, it might, would just give us that much more information, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's asking them to have a, how many umpteen call, another s- six columns there, I don't know. Any other discussion, or any other questions? What's our ditch program like this coming up this two thousand twenty-four, how, how many kilometers are we looking at? I know that's your, your quarterly from this, but.
Are you referring to the, the brushing?
Yeah, like, brushing a ditch, or, you might not have that information on you, it's just a.
No, I, I do, I'm, so, we're in the west region, up more particularly in the Goodrich region, so it's, it's typically that twenty-two miles-ish, that's two sides, so eleven miles.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking like drainage ditch, is it?
Oh, drainage?
Yeah.
One second here. So the two I mentioned earlier, we were working on two this winter. So the two I mentioned earlier, we are working on two this winter.
Yep.
And those two are the Vincent Creek and the, and the Kardashian one off Highway 55 and Range Road 463. And there is, there are currently nine that are active, so we'll be continuing on those in the spring.
When are you starting on that Kardashian one?
Depending on equipment availability, we're currently assisting some other departments with some of our excavators, so.
So it might be not till next year sometime?
We are, we're trying to start in mid-December, but if not, it will be in January.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, go ahead.
This is our chance to ask lots of questions, I guess, but I did have residents in Deputy Reeve Crick's ward, I think it was 614 they were brushing, so, and they started brushing last May or whatever, they kind of just left it, left all the big trees there. I don't know if that's all finished, 614, I think, and, sorry, just south of Highway 28.
Through the Reeve, to Councilor Swiger, yes, I know which road you're talking about. I don't remember the exact number, but it was a matter of they were, they went in there and utilized their, one specialized piece of equipment, did what they could, and then they were coming back. So they've since been back there and cleaned that all up. That was part of this year's contract.
Okay, so it's all, that's all done? That whole road's done now?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, well, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. We'll take longer with the next guy. Good afternoon, I think, yes.
Matter of fact, good afternoon, Reeve and Councilors. I'll just take you through some of the things that we got in the third quarter with our capital projects and things in the bulk of the fleet. The biggest one and the most obvious one was Township Road 610 from Highway 28 to Range Road 460. As you can see from the picture there, when we got some wet weather during the grading phase, it got a bit soupy, but we did finally get it all tied together. The final product is, on the next slide, please. Where you got it here? There we are. It actually looks really good. Contract has been completed, all the ditch grading is all, everything's done. The only thing that's left for this particular road is the final acceptance certificate, and that won't happen for another two years. But it does look pretty shiny, even if it's black. Some bridge construction, this is Bridge File 13135. It's on Range Road 471, just north of Highway 55. It is a dead-end road. So in order to provide access to the residents, we needed to put in a temporary bridge, which we happen to have one in our yard. And even though this picture's not from the third quarter, just so you can see it there, it's on the left, that's the temporary bridge that we usually keep in our yard, and it's in there just to facilitate access for the residents who live down the road. I believe there are three houses past this bridge.
Yep, three houses.
And the other one that we've recently completed was Bridge File 74564. It's on the Pluraxis Road, which is Range Road 420. Because that is the sole access to the Primus Lake evaluation range, we were required to keep the road open, so this particular one had to be replaced in halves, which that one actually, by the way, just wrapped up last week and is complete. And over the course of the last, oh, year and a half, we've been comparing notes with the city of Cold Lake and compiling a spreadsheet on the water that's coming out of Cold Lake and the water that is coming in to the MD of Bonneville. And over the course of that time, there's been a seriously large quantity of water that appears to have gone missing. Now, we looked and looked and looked and looked to see if it was leaking somewhere. The only place we could think of that it could possibly go, we wouldn't notice it, would be the river, but that is encased as it crosses the river. What we did is, in conjunction with the city of Cold Lake, we sealed off the system and pressurized it up, and then we let it sit for several hours to see if there's a pressure drop. If there's a pressure drop, that would indicate there's a leak somewhere, but we didn't have any pressure loss. So we know that there's not a leak that we're aware of, although what I can say is on the back wall in that picture, on the right-hand side, there's a meter there, and it has a certain reading to it, and the reading that's on that meter and the reading that's coming out of the computer in the control room are different. So we suspect it's a software issue somewhere along the line, but it does not appear to be an issue for the MD itself.
So let me just stop you there. So was, how did that affect billing, then? Like, were we, was there being more water charged than what was being used, or?
I really can't speak to that because that goes back to the Bonneville Regional Water Commission. They're better probably prepared to answer, you know, how that handled bill, how that could possibly affect billing. It is tracked. As far as that goes, I don't know the process of how they arrive at what kind of bill they send us. So, missing all this water, we know what came into Bonneville, and I believe that's the basis that they use form for payment. So just the fact that the numbers that were coming out of Cold Lake were considerably different than what was going into Bonneville was a main concern to us. One of the other things we accomplished this fall was, or pardon me, in the third quarter, was drilling a new water well at Kinnisoo Ridge. It's just about 10 meters away from the existing well. It was drilled to the same depth. Took about two or three days to do that. That well is currently in the process of being licensed. Once it's licensed, it will be put into use for the chalet full-time. It has been tied into the building, everything is complete. It's on a variable frequency drive. It's a lot easier on the pump than the old well was. We're hoping that the water turns out to be really good, so we don't have any issues with it. Some equipment deliveries and adding to our fleet, we took possession of a new loader-mounted sweeper for the airport. We've actually, in just the last few days, we actually had used, caused to use it, and it seems to work out pretty good. We're currently training some of our other personnel who are qualified on a loader to also operate the sweeper, so we'll have lots of backup for that. We also took delivery of the truck-mounted liquid de-icer sprayer. That's for when weather gets considerably colder and we end up with some icing problems on the runway. We use the liquid de-icer, which is fairly effective. We also took delivery of a couple new grader wing plows. That one's been mounted on the grader already, and we're also expecting two more, which we, since this was done, we have received both of them, we've had, got all four new ones. We're also expecting four new heavy trucks to be delivered. One of them we've already received, the other three are imminent. And that's about all I have for you. Any questions?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor.
I don't know if this falls under your department, line painting on the roads?
That's actually not mine. My guy administers the contract, but that's actually part of Monty's, part of Monty's budget.
Yeah, I just, I guess maybe he could just, I didn't, you didn't really talk about it, I guess, either, but.
Do you want to speak to it, Monty?
Through the Reeve, to Councilor, it's not in this report because it was performed in the fourth quarter. They had had some, the contractor that we had hired had some issues getting here due to some fires in the north. I don't know how that correlates. What ended up happening was the temperatures weren't conducive to getting the whole contract completed, so we completed the resource road, Bear Trap, and.
Gurneville?
And Gurneville, did the priority ones, and we've since closed the contract. It's in the works right now, and we're going to re-tender it in the spring.
Did you do, like, all the lines or just the middle line?
I believe on those three, we did all the lines.
Okay, and what about, can you talk, like, what you used to, or we did at one time the, I don't know, like, the plastic lines or whatever they were.
Right, so we did not use that material this year, but we did use alkali paint, not water-based paint like we did in previous years, so it should have a lot more duration.
So wasn't, wasn't Gurneville done with those at one time?
From what I remember, Gurneville, it was done with that plastic, which is exponentially higher in cost. The problem was it is when the crack sealing, especially on that one, the crack sealing was right along the seam of the road, so you're putting oil over top of that line, so.
So, I guess, did we get the longevity out of it that we were kind of promised? Because it was supposed to, what, last forever, or what?
I'm not sure about that material.
Because I know it was a lot more, but it was supposed to last for a little bit longer, right? And it doesn't seem like it was that long ago that we did it, right?
Right, like I said, the crack sealing was done right over top of it, so I mean, you're not going to cover it with oil and it's not going to sustain that, right?
Yeah, so that's the only reason why it's not working, or what?
Yeah, where it's not been covered, it has, it should have a lot longer life than even alkali paint, but alkali compared to water-based is going to last a lot longer.
All right. So I guess, maybe Brian can answer, was that, should we look at that again in the future, or is that kind of now not the way to go, or?
Through the Reeve, we would, I guess we would like to put that, I believe it's called coroplast?
Or.
Thermoplastic, that's what it is. We'd like to do that. The cost is about 10 times, but it lasts, the duration of that is about 10 years. So it's just a high-cost budget item for one year in order to do it. Would it make sense to do it? Perhaps, but again, it's a, it's a big cost. If we have, you know, a $500,000 contract for using alkyte paint for the lines that we got, that would be $5 million now for the same amount of lines. However, we may not have to do that for another, you know, seven to 10 years. So it's a, we'd have to do a cost-benefit analysis on what would be better, but, yeah, you're, doing that would give us a lot less running around to do checking on lines, for sure.
Well, I'm just curious, and is the Gurneville the only one we did it on, then?
You know what?
Wolf Lake was about years ago on that.
Same thing?
Through the Reeve, I don't have that information. That was before my time, Monty and Lyle's time, that that was happening, so I could confirm that with the form, and they would have that information, but I don't have that.
Yeah, it might have been before your time, but it didn't seem like that long ago that we did. Gurneville, I'm sure it was like three years ago.
Well, I've been here four years, and it was before that.
Yeah.
So I don't know when that.
Well, it was in my terms, it was within the last six years, for sure, so.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
But it's a, it's a good product to have, again, just high, high cost, initial costs.
Well, I'm just thinking, like, if we did, if we just did Gurneville again this year, and like I said, that thermoplastic or whatever was definitely done in my time here, so we didn't get six years out of it, I guess, right, so.
Yeah.
In that case.
Can you update us? I'm pretty sure they're thinking about putting new meters on the water lines, right, after all those tests? We had the meeting.
You know, for the Reeve, I'm not sure. That might have been discussed after I left the meeting, so you'll probably have more information on that than I do. I left that meeting.
Yeah, they were talking, he's talking about the changing some meters and re, you know, redoing that, Darcy, for the, because we did all kinds of pressure tests down the line and nothing's leaking anywhere, so obviously one of the meters ain't working somewhere. So it's been a big problem for a few years now that nothing's jiving, right?
Right. If there's no further questions, administration recommends that council accept the Infrastructure Services Department 2023 Third Quarterly Report as information.
Mr. Reeve, just, can you comment on the brushing program? Because we were kind of doing a, I think, a bit of a study on comparison between contracting it out and in-house, and is it, is it quite a bit better contracting out?
I think Monty has the, some information on that.
Through the Reeve, to Councilor Swiger, I think the costs are comparable, it's just the resources that we need to do, to use in the summertime during the season is limited. We do, however, have a portion of the budget that we do self-perform our work to use as fill-in work whenever possible. So we've been doing quite a bit of that lately with the lack of snow. We've been sending crews out to all the troubled areas.
Okay, and brushing is, has to be done in the summer, spring and summer, I guess? I don't know.
There's a bird nesting season from March 15th to August 15th, I believe, depending on the contractor, if they have a, someone who's qualified to do a bird nesting survey as we did this year, they can, they can work through, if they find a nest, they have to identify it and keep a radius around it. One of the things we did do with the brushing that we found over the last couple of years is the, a lot of these areas, we need to remove fence. The prices for the, for the removal of fence and re-establishing it if necessary come in quite high, so this year, we've actually went out to the area where we planted to contract it out next year and have done that fence removal ourselves, saving us quite a bit of money.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, I like motion.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion that council accepts Infrastructure Services Department 2023 Third Quarterly Report as information. Any discussion? I think we had quite a bit. So, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
I guess we're going for 9.4.1.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and counsel. This report outlines council invitations. Council received the following invitations to events as summarized below. There are a couple of no-charge events. One is for the Stepping Stones Crisis Society, the Family Violence Prevention Awareness Walk and Candlelight Vigil to happen November 30th. And Stepping Stones Crisis Society is hosting their Family Violence Prevention Awareness Walk and Candlelight Vigil on November 30th. The walk begins at 3:00 PM at the Stepping Stones Crisis Society Administration Building in Cold Lake with the Candlelight Vigil at 4:00. Additionally, this society has requested that the Reeve say a few words at the start of the vigil. The second one is Connect for Food. It's the regional food project launch on December 1st. The Connect for Food Regional Food Project has invited council to attend their project launch meeting on December 1st at 9:00 AM to noon. In-person attendance will be at the Portage College Campus Boardroom in St. Paul, or attendance can be virtual. There are a couple of invitations for charge events. The Farm Tech Foundation of Alberta Crossroads Crop Conference, January 29th to 31st. The Farm Tech Foundation of Alberta is hosting the Crossroads Crop Conference on January 29th to 31st at the Weston Calgary Airport. Early bird registration fee for this event is $515.79, including GST, until December 1st, or $571.71, including GST after December 1st. And then the second one is the Brownlee LLP Emerging Trends in Municipal Law Seminar to be held February 15th, 2024. And Brownlee is hosting their Emerging Trends in Municipal Law Seminar on February 15th from 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM at the Edmonton Expo Center. Registration fees for this event are $190 plus GST for in-person attendance, or $130 plus GST for virtual admittance to the livestream event. So the costs are as outlined, and administration's recommended action is at council's discretion, whether they want to attend any of those events or none of those events.
So they just let administration know, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to correspondence. I guess they can, whenever, we don't have to do it today?
Mr. Reeve, for at least the two items where there is fees associated, we should have motions to approve the costs, the expenditures for those events.
Okay, does anyone want to attend these things from council right now? So we have to make a motion if we want to.
Mr. Reeve, I think there's some people have already said they're going to attend the Brownlee one, so I think we do need that motion, don't we?
We need two separate motions?
So there was one, the Reynolds? The RMRF? There was, there is two different emerging trends municipal seminars held by two separate organizations. One, I believe, is RMRF, which council has already made a motion on for attending. This one is the Brownlee Seminar, so it is a different event.
Oh, I see.
And it is on a different date. The one that council already passed a motion on was, was on, is on February 9th.
Okay, well, let's make the motions, and if anyone wants to attend, it's in place. Correct? What's the first motion that we need to make?
I guess if, at the very minimum, I guess the motion could be that council approves attendance to the events as follows, and it would be the Farm Tech Foundation at a total cost of $571.71 per registration to be funded from each individual budget, as well as the Brownlee LLP Emerging Trends.
Okay, we'll wait for that to come up, and then we'll, someone can make a motion.
And Mr. Reeve, I'll just comment on the, I've been to a few of the legal seminars, and they actually are very useful for anybody who hasn't been to one, even if they have been to one, because you can ask, they got lots of time for you to ask very pointed, specific questions, too, so. Good seminars, but you can also ask them kind of, once the seminars, there's a, there's
a, there's a bear pit and then there's sessions, or there's times to just ask one-on-one questions. So it's very worthwhile. Okay. Okay. Anybody like to make this motion?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion. On behalf of council, the council approves attending to events as followed. Farm Tech Foundation of Alberta Crossroads Crop Conference to be held on January 29th to 31st, 2024 at the cost of up to $571.71 per register to, registering, to be funded from each member of council's respective 2024 conference registration budget and Brownlee's LLP Emerging Trends in Municipal Law Seminar to be held February 15th, 2024 at a cost of 190 per person to be funded from each member of council's respective 2024 conference registration budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Onto correspondence and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So, um, in your package, you'll see, um, correspondence numbered, um, 10.1 to 10.15 for council's information.
Anybody have any questions or comments on this list? Okay, I'm just looking for a motion to approve this then. Okay. Okay. Thank you, uh, Counselor Swager for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through, I believe it's 15. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Mentioned the Lara event coming up. It's, uh, November 30th for Young Farmer Social at Eastbourne. So I just put it out there.
Which one is that, uh, council subject? Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, here it is. So what's that entail again? That's a thing at Eastbourne?
Yeah.
Okay.
Young Farmer Social.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Uh, action reports?
Anybody? I'll, I'll just, uh, oh, sorry, Donnie, go ahead.
Okay. Mine's quick. I went to, uh, RMHC Taste of Home Gala Friday, it was on Friday evening. It was at a different venue this year. It was at JW Marriott. It was a very good meal. Uh, my larger attendance, they had a good turnout and, uh, raised a few dollars there as well. They're looking to increase the Royal McDonald House in Edmonton from 35 to 100 rooms. And they're currently working in Calgary right now and increasing theirs to 90 some rooms. And there's still big demand for families and them homes. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, was that a BRFA meeting? And, um, I think it was business as usual for the most part. It was, uh, definitely called, um, award season. Like, uh, there's a ton of different banquets and whatevers to attend over the next few weeks. So I get to whatever I can for those. And then, um, I think I talked about the sports, the second, uh, the sports regional tourism committee there last time, but, um.
Yeah, you did. Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I won't talk about it again. So.
Well, you can go if there's some, if there's update or anything or.
No, just that, uh, we should be here. We should have an announcement soon on the winter games here. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Um, in our FCSS board meeting on the 16th, uh, we approved the strategic plan we'd worked on this summer. On the 18th EMS Christmas party, I was able to say a few words of thank you and if my wife gave me tips on how I can do better next time.
Perfect.
Um, you know, I was, I was kind of not all with it mentally that day, just kind of having a hard time. So, um, on the 20th, uh, the Reeve and I went with, uh, went into Edmonton, met with Minister Schultz to express concerns about the IPCA that's proposed for Wolf Lake area. I think it was a good meeting. On the 21st, we, well, it was Committee of the Hole and Budget Deliverations. And then on the 22nd to the 24th, uh, FCSS Provincial Conference, um, that was in Edmonton. The premier, the finance minister and a bunch of MOAs, uh, from both parties were actually at the conference there for the, for the breakfast the one morning, uh, including our M O S Scott Seer. He was there. Um, I attended a, a good session on how to recruit and retain volunteers. It was just quite in, it was, you could translate the information for just general people skills in general, right? It was pretty good though. It was a really good, really good session, actually. Um, then I attended another session there that was, uh, it was about addressing gender-based violence in which the presenter seemed to think that there were more than just two genders. He even suggested that we should say boys will be humans instead of saying boys will be boys. Uh, I disagreed with him. I asked him after the presentation was over if he thought that trans people participating in women's sports and effectively stealing trophies and medals that women have trained and worked hard to earn is a form of gender-based violence? And his answer was no. Uh, in all fairness to him, though, he did have some really good points along the lines that, uh, men and boys should be able to express their feelings instead of feeling like they have to be a strong silent type and just kind of keep everything inside. So that part was good. Um, I thought Counselor Kivya could be here to give some, some more report on some of that conference, felt he can do that later. 24, also on the 24th, I, I zoomed in to the Northern Heights Library Board Meeting because that was the same morning as the conference. So I just was there for about a half hour to go over the budget and the policy part. And then in the evening of the 24th, I had the honor of being in Glendon for the medal ceremony that the BRFA was doing. And collectively, they, uh, recognized over 1,350 years of service, uh, by giving service awards to the, all the people there, like 10, 20, 30, 40 years and 12, 22 and 32-year service awards. Um, and I guess one of the highlights of that event was that Counselor Swager was there and he received, one of two recipients that received a 40-year service award with the fire, and it was the Fire Services Exemplary Service Medal for 40 years. So that was pretty cool to see somebody get, see Counselor Swager get such an awesome award. So.
He started clapping for himself.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Go ahead, counsel.
Oh, just.
Do we have to go, sure or something now or?
Pretty important, eh?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That's quite accomplished. Congratulations.
To, uh, I'll just talk a little bit about, uh, Munichor and Riverland Trail Group because they're, they're combined. Um, I just want to mention, I think, again, the DMO, so Destination Marketing Organization. Uh, the town of Bonneville just recently signed up for that organization. I, I think we should consider signing up to the DMO organization. Uh, maybe we need input from admin, I, I'd suggest, I guess, to give us more information on it. But Destination Marketing Organization. So now if you, if you recall, pretty recently, the provincial government is funding, um, uh, this area as a destination. And, uh, so that's kind of, you know, kind of rolls into the Destination Marketing Organization group thing. Um, in the past, they've been, you know, looking at Banff, uh, you know, around Calgary and those areas in Edmonton and Jasper and blah, blah, blah. So now they're looking at our area. So maybe it helps if we're part of that art marketing organization. Uh, the other, other comment was, um, organization called Alberta Trailnet, uh, who gives the snowmobile clubs and the off-highway groups a million bucks a year and they're doing that for a four-year period. So, uh, and it's interesting. So those groups get that money, but, uh, the Riverlands Trail Group don't, don't get any of it because they're part of a, a private trail apparently. So the Munichor Trail is considered a private trail. So we don't, can't get any federal or provincial funding or whatever. So sounds a bit strange and I, I think Riverland's kind of looking into it to ask more questions. Uh, and then last, uh, comment was, we, we had a C2 meeting last night. Uh, you know, lots of good discussion. I guess I'll just say the new chairperson now is the mayor of Bonneville and I'm the vice chair. And, um, you know, that just goes on. C2's doing okay, I think. Uh, um, we didn't really talk much. We talked a bit about policies and stuff that are coming up. So we're kind of spending more time kind of going through policies to make sure every, it's all fair for everyone at the C2. And lots of discussion about the different groups that utilize the C2 and, and sort of who gets sort of first cut at whatever arenas and boarded, hot, boarded arenas and that sort of thing. So, um, Les is really looking into that to come up with a decent policy. So everyone is, everyone's treated fairly.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, I went out with Al to Ardmore area to check on a water line. Mr. Vespolco was there. Uh, the guy had some concerns and, uh, I was very impressed how we took care of it and we helped the guy out. Um, so I was impressed with Al and, um, Brian, the way they took care of that. Uh, had a water commission meeting and you had a questions about that, but there is some water, uh, there is some metering problems, obviously, and, uh, they're, you know, they're looking into that right now. So we're gonna have probably a way better report next meeting. So the next meeting, I don't know when the next meeting is, but, uh, I think it'll be in January. So, and you're a part of that now. So you'll, I think you are. Yeah. Uh, you got switched to last. Uh, didn't attend the Glendon Ag Society. It probably, uh, I think Mike did. Uh, we had community policing committee the other day and that went well. Uh, we, we talked a little bit about our, uh, our meeting with the minister and how that went there. And I didn't think that went very well, but, uh, you know, I reassured, uh, the police in our area that we're very happy the way they, you know, they have to catch, you know, it's not their fault. They keep catching everybody and they keep releasing them. So we're still very proud of our RCMP here and, uh, we, we want to help them from our, whatever we can do as M B to help them to make this area better. So, uh, they're, uh, you know, we're gonna talk to them and see if there's any kind of, Louis had a bunch of comments, uh, how we could help with them and, uh, they're gonna talk. So thank Louis for, I think Louis is over there. I think he's, yeah, just saying how good a job you did there. I just gotta go through my thing here. Uh, you mentioned the B F A. We had a meeting. Uh, I think I don't need to touch anymore. Had a C2 meeting and then I did the parade in Cold Lake. I just want to thank all the people that put the float together. It was a great float and, uh, had a lot of fun doing that. Beautiful weather for a, for a parade without no snow. And we have another one coming up here. Uh, on Saturday, it starts at 5:00 P. M. If anybody can make it. So that's it. Yes, go ahead.
So we do have one, um, additional in-camera item, uh, related to personnel if, uh, council would choose to go in camera.
Absolutely. So, uh, we'll go, uh, I need a motion to go in camera now.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I want to.
Yeah.
Put in a positive plug for, for, uh, Mr. Gandolfi's, uh, team also because I, I know recently they've been, over the last month or so, working really well with the RCMP on kind of joint task stuff and helping out around Ardmore. So just, uh, appreciate the help that they're given.
All right. We need one, one for Matt now. Matt, uh, good job. Uh, all right. I need a motion to go into camera here for personnel. Thank you, Counselors, uh, Swager for making a motion to go all in favor. That's carried. Thank you.
Shut your mic off.